I'll call the public meeting to order at seven o'clock. This is what it says on my phone. That'll flip in a second. First is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pittman, do you want to take us away?
Of course.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello? Yeah, this one isn't working, but this one's working. Excellent. Agenda review. Dr. Harris, can I have your agenda?
Yes, I have. At the end of the tentatious report, I will add the plegism.
Awesome. And I have one thing to add under my chairman's report, which is communication protocol and procedure. So it would be a section C. And with that, well, is there any board member said something to add to the agenda? There are none. Okay. We will go into the LRTC student presentation. If you could just give the board a moment to move over to the crowd's meeting.
The student presentation will be right after my remarks. Sorry about that, okay? Good evening, everybody. You're welcome for being here tonight. Such nice support. On behalf of the staff and students of Lakes Region Technology Center, I'd like to welcome you to our June 2024 Governor Whitworth School Board Meeting. I've been asked to share a few highlights with you regarding our end-of-year celebrations and some upcoming events that will take place in the next few weeks. First, I'd like to mention that since our last meeting, LRTC has held a very well-attended Joint School Board Dinner, where a new four-year regional agreement between Governor Whitworth Regional School District, the Receiving District, and our sending districts of Farmington, Moulton Borough, and the Joint Board for Prospect Mountain was discussed and adopted. During that meeting, I shared with the attending members from all of the sending schools our year-end review and a look ahead in regards to our new course offerings that have been approved and accepted by this board with the assistance of our Academical Affairs Committee. I thank this board for their continued support of career and technical education. Some additional highlights I'd like to mention include our recently-held CTE year-end celebration. I have shared with you as members of the board the program from that very well-attended night, and invite you to take a look at some of the photos on the LRTC website and on our social media platforms from that night's event. As we ramp up our year, we continue to host tours of our transitioning students from all over the district as they enter Kingswood Regional Middle School. Center-wide, we as a staff support a seven-through-12 and beyond personalized educational plan for all of our students, starting with the sixth-grade career options visits and exploration tours. We work with all of our schools to accommodate that trend, including our sending districts, to help the students learn more about career development. I would like to acknowledge the teachers of LRTC who consistently bring to our community career development options so that any student graduating high school in the coming days has an awareness of the options that are here for anyone who wants to participate in them. Lastly, tonight, I want to recognize the collaboration between LRTC, KRHS, and all of the community college partners for our dual-enrollment early college program. This year, Lakes Region Technology Center and Kingswood Regional High School offered 13 early college classes. 144 students participated and were enrolled and earned a total of 468 college credits. As you know, the average cost of college credits today, college credit hours, in the state of New Hampshire is about $340, but this was totally tuition-free as part of the program for New Hampshire students. It's a total of $159,000. The credits earned are tremendous savings to our students and their families. We will continue to work with New Hampshire CTE to keep this program available to all New Hampshire students. Finally, LRTC takes great pride in offering industry-recognized credentials, but to our graduating students with a portfolio of their experiences and with a resume they can take with them as they walk across the stage of their respective high schools at graduation. That, ladies and gentlemen, is what we do for Governor Whitworth Regional School District. Please stay tuned for more in the coming weeks as we start the new year early in July. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Governor Whitworth as curriculum coordinator, Dr. Katie. Yes.
Good evening. I'm excited to introduce Janine Cameron and several of her students as they showcase their hard work around DECA and the school store. The students in her class participate annually in a school-based enterprise, or SBE, which is an entrepreneurial operation in a school setting. SBEs are managed and operated by students as hands-on learning laboratories that integrate their national curriculum standards. Tonight's presentation highlights the career pathway competencies in which students demonstrate an understanding of entrepreneurship, finance, management, and marketing and sales. The specific key performance indicators that students have learned about and applied throughout the course and in DECA competitions are financial analysis, product and service management, and pricing. Tonight, these young entrepreneurs will undoubtedly impress you with their business acumen. Please welcome Mrs. Cameron and her students Nora Brown, Sierra Rose, and David Lehman.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. So I am Nora Brown. I'm a junior at Kingswood Regional High School, and I am a chapter officer for our DECA chapter as well as a state officer for New Hampshire DECA.
My name is Sierra Rose. I'm also a junior at Kingswood Regional High School, and I'm also a DECA chapter officer.
My name is David Lehman. I am a senior at Kingswood Regional High School, and I'm also a chapter officer for Lakes Region Technology Center.
All right. So you all may be wondering, what is a school-based enterprise? So a school-based enterprise is an entrepreneurial operation in a school setting that provides goods and services to meet the needs of the market. SBEs are managed and operated by students as hands-on learning laboratories that integrate national curriculum standards in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. SBEs provide realistic and practical learning experiences that reinforce classroom instruction. SBEs can sell to consumers through permanent location, a mobile kiosk, or through internet marketing. Products may include school spirit wear, food and beverage items, school supplies, signs and banners, and more, while other SBEs provide services such as creative design, advertising, sales, and more.
Okay, so these are some pictures from when our chapter went to our state conference. And then this is a photo from our chapter at the International Conference in Anaheim. So you may, another question you may be wondering is how does the Pro Depot and the marketing classes at the Tech Center tie in to our curriculum? So at the Tech Center, the marketing classes offer two levels, Level One and Level Two, where we learn how to properly restock, and we learn the foundation needed to work in the Pro Depot, and we learn competencies in the classroom to put into action. Our curriculum is based on the national standard competencies, so some examples of these are the role of finance and business, nature of budgets, vendor selection, merchandise assortment, and factors affecting pricing decisions. These fall into the broader categories of entrepreneurship, finance, management, marketing, and sales. And then at the end of the year, we get to put all of these skills to the test by getting certifications using the online platforms of Stookin' and HubSpot. These certifications that we earn are industry-recognized, and in order to work in the social media marketing industry as a career, we need to get these certifications. So Gold Certification, and what is it? So Gold Certification is a prestigious recognition awarded to high school DECs in our SBE where it must meet rigorous standards like operations, marketing, finance, and customer service. To get certified, we must submit a written project around 20 pages, and this year, Dave and I completed that paper, and this paper had to demonstrate proficiency in these areas. The Gold Certification signifies that the SBE is operating at a high level of performance and is providing learning experiences for all of student members.
When initially getting the SBE certification, you have to fit these nine qualifications, which are financial analysis, operations, marketing info management, market planning, human resource management, product service management, distribution channel management, promotion, and selling. This year, for 2023-2024, Sierra and I focused on financial analysis, pricing, and product service management. So in our paper, we really integrated how these three tie into our SBE.
So our school-based enterprise at our International Career and Development Conference. So each year, when we get gold certified with our SBE, we are able to bring two additional students to our International Conference, which this year was held in Anaheim, California. So these students participate in the School-Based Enterprise Academy as well as a presentation to a panel of judges. Along with this, our SBE also helps all of our members in DECA, specifically the ones that qualify at states. When our members qualify at our state conference, they have the opportunity to go to the International Conference, and all of the profits that we make throughout the year at the Pro Depot, which is our school-based enterprise, get divided evenly amongst all of those that qualify at states, and it makes it easier and more accessible for them to attend this International Conference, which is really a great opportunity for them. All right. So we've actually brought a poster board here today like we would bring to our International Conference that we would present, so we're going to do a little mock presentation for you guys.
So starting off with our retail image of the Pro Depot, the Pro Depot, the retail image is grab-and-go, and this is because we're located in the Tech Center, which is right next to the high school. We are open between A and B block, and then again between C and D block, and something really important for all members working in the Pro Depot to remember is to be efficient, and this is because we want students to be able to come in and out and grab a snack at state field for the day. We'll also make sure we're on the other side.
All right. So in order for our school-based enterprise to run smoothly, we need to have products, so we need vendors. So our vendors for this previous school year have been Coca-Cola, For Real, Colby's Graphics, Sam's Club, and Walmart. A little bit more onto Colby's Graphics. Colby's Graphics is the company that we've used this year to obtain our apparel and school spirit wear. So this is all chosen by our marketing to students. They go through the catalogs, and they choose different pieces of clothing to print either the Lakes Region Technology Center logo or Kingswood Knights apparel, and we always make sure, or the students always make sure, that this apparel is aligned with the current trends in the fashion industry. We also strategically place all of this merchandise in the corner of Pro Depot near the checkout counter so that when people are waiting in line to go and buy their snacks, beverages, school supplies, et cetera, they will be eyeing all of the apparel as they're walking by and will be more inclined to make that purchase.
Another big part of our school-based enterprise is the stock turnover. So one big part of that is planned reductions, that's anticipated markdowns, employee discounts, faculty discounts. Our biggest, our biggest sale at the end of the year is a 50% off sale, which we do just to get the old products out, so that way at the beginning of the school year, we can get all the new products in and don't have to worry about throwing out all those old products. Another thing we do is our weekly inventory. This is to determine how much food we have that's going to expire soon. We also do this to see what we need to buy. That way, we're making as much profit as possible. And every month, we do the same thing with our apparel, just to see if we need more hats, t-shirts, sweatshirts, and stuff like that, just to be sure we're making as much profits as possible.
So a little more on planned reductions, like Dave was talking about. Mid-May, we start ordering less and less inventory, and this is because we want to make sure that we don't waste any of our inventory, and we want to make sure that it sells out. So starting June 1st, we start doing 50% off sales in the Pro Depot, with the goal of this being that we have no leftover product until the end of the school year comes around. We also put our apparel on sale, and this is because we want to make sure that when the next school year comes around, we have room for ordering new items and so that we can keep up with the current fashion trends. And then additional discounts are offered to the Tech Center employees and the Kingswood employees to also help excel out of some of these apparel items. So this is our SBE and how it tied into our curriculum. Do you have any questions?
Board members have any questions? No, we're not hearing the mics. We're on our own.
I'll do a brief one.
Say that, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know if I could get the mic to work out. Next quarter of business is the acceptance of minutes. So first, we have the minutes for our board meeting of May 6th, held at the Joint Boards' meeting at the Lakes Region Technology Center and the Governor Whitworth Regional School District School Board meeting held at Kingswood Regional Middle School, which is actually in the shared library between the two schools. I would seek a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Dr. Jim Manning, second guy. I had one edit, which is under the motion to adopt policy GEA for second read. I'll find the page. It's towards the end. Thank you. Page six, and I just found it too. There needs to be a space, but that edit's been made. I shared it with Kathy, but I just want to let you all know. Yes, do you have an edit, Dr. Beth?
On page eight.
On page eight.
The motion to approve the request for an additional teacher for the 2024-2025 school year.
On page eight, the motion to approve the request for an additional teacher for the 2024-2025 school year at New Durham School. I am marked as voting yes. I abstained from that vote.
Okay. Kathy, do you have that noted?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other edits? Yes, sure.
Okay. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay. I'd like to direct your attention to page five, under the chairman's report. Just a couple of little typos. Well, I think the mistake of reading "to not meet," I think it'd be more grammatical to say "not to meet." I don't remember exactly how it was stated, but that would be a correction. And also, month should be plural because we're referring to the months of July or August.
Okay.
I think.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Are there any other edits or discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, when you're ready, could you call the roll?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. The next meeting set of meeting minutes is the meeting minutes of May 28th of the Human Resources Committee. See who's in attendance at that meeting. In attendance were myself, Dr. Jim Manning, Mary Shilra, Dana was absent, so I would seek a motion from one of the members present and a second to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Got the second. Moved by Mary Shilra, seconded by Dr. Jim Manning. I just had one edit, and that's the motion, it's been added now, but in your original packet, we had added at the end of the motion, we should say, "for no more than $3,000 per employee," so it's in your meeting packets, but I requested that added because that was my motion. Is there any additional discussion? Are there edits? All right. Then Kathy, if you could call the roll for that committee?
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
And Dana? You weren't, you weren't there, so you'd have to abstain. Thank you. And the next is the Finance Committee meeting of May 28th. I had no edits, so I request that there be a motion for, well, in attendance was myself, Guy Pike, and Jim Pittman. Dr. Beth was absent, and I didn't see any edits that needs to be made, so I'd request a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved. Second?
Awesome. Motioned by Guy Pike, seconded by Jim Pittman. Kathy, if you could call the roll of those.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
I abstained.
Thank you. And we are now on to public input. Oh, the manifest? Oh, yes. Sorry. I'm looking at the old agenda. So the manifest approval, manifest payroll is $1,873,181.74. Account payable is $4,43,866.77, for a grand total of $5,917,048.51. So I request a motion to approve the manifest as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Jim Pittman, seconded by Dr. Beth. Would you call the roll? Kathy, once you're ready?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have public input, 15 minutes, unless otherwise extended by the board, and we request three minutes per individual. Please direct your comments towards things on the agenda, not towards each other in the crowd, and please be respectful and don't use vulgar language. Thank you. And the podium's right there. Seeing no public input. Oh. Okay. Sorry, I was gonna say, there's a lot of people here. There's no public input. If you could state your name and town residence, please.
Diane Harrington, Doctor Marrow. I'm also a special education teacher for the past 15 years. Before that, I was a parent educator for 18 years. I understand, first of all, I want to thank you, but I understand the importance of support staff from the standpoint of now being a teacher and when I worked as a parent educator. I love working in the district and have always felt supported, but as you know, the cost of living has increased substantially, and wages for support staff have not been measured. I hope you consider supporting the retention bonus so that we show our support, that our support staff are not only valued but appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. Terry Laffey, President of the Governor Marrow Support Staff Association. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for hearing our request for bonus compensation for the support staff and including it on tonight's agenda, and for any consideration that you have in this matter. I know everybody here knows this, but I'll say it over and over again. Governor Whitworth Regional School District's support staff is the best there is. There's no way better. We have asked multiple times for an additional compensation relief to offset the rising costs of living. We're working with figures that were negotiated on four years ago, and a lot has happened four years, as we all know. We have had an unprecedented number of openings in our support staff, and they leave, people are leaving at a rapid rate. Our fear is that over the summer, those numbers are going to skyrocket because people are looking. We have asked for a bone-hemmed role of support staff in good faith to show them that we appreciate and value them, so we can work toward maintaining our own support staff and not contract with outside agencies, which is costing the district 30% higher. As always, we are here for the kids of this school district, but we have the end that we need to pay our bills. But again, I would like to thank you for considering.
Are there any additional public inputs?
Hi, my name is Steve Johnson, and this question came up about Baccalaureate. Is there going to be Baccalaureate this year or not?
Could you just say for the record your town residence?
Sure. Town residence, school board.
So for Baccalaureate, the high school administration put out to local religious spiritual leaders if anyone would like to attend or to host the Baccalaureate. I have not heard to date if they've had a response, so it's possible there will not be a Baccalaureate if they are not available to host that. It could still be hosted at the Art Center, but it's my understanding that we did not hear back from our community leaders.
And whose decision was it to not have Baccalaureate?
Well, I'm not sure why they're unavailable. I wouldn't, I wouldn't venture to.
Did someone in this organization say?
I wouldn't venture to assume why they're unavailable, but in the past, it's my understanding that spiritual leaders, religious leaders, were part of that, and if they're not available, then we wouldn't hold it. So we've put out to the community who would like to hold the Baccalaureate.
Was it a part of, was it always part of the commencement? And perhaps then why did it? And perhaps then why did it change this year?
Because we haven't heard back that people are available to come.
So I'm not understanding the process at all. Tell me, where did someone institute this that we're not going to have it anymore? And unless we hear back from the spiritual leaders in the town or the towns that represent the Kingswood Regional High School? So tell me where did it originate from?
It was among the administration. We put out to the people who usually lead the event. And we haven't heard that they're...
So did you institute it?
I was part of the conversation.
Okay. Did you ask for public input?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the response?
We have, as I've said three times, we do not have response.
So nobody responded?
No.
Do people know? I mean, do the graduates of this class know that you're not going to have Baccalaureate this year?
The principal communicated to the class and to the parents of the class to ask who would like to help lead the event as it had been led in years past. And they did not receive a response. So there are no leaders to lead the event.
Has it always been part of the graduation process? Why does this year happen that you have to ask for that to come in?
I'm gonna...
I'm answering your question.
No, if I may, I mean, usually we don't allow as much back and forth. I, you know, it's not a Q and A or public input as typical. But I believe the, I honestly wasn't aware of this administrative issue, but it falls within their purview, not the board's purview to schedule these graduation activities. It might be something that's worth having a discussion with the superintendent. But again, if there's someone to lead the Baccalaureate that they're looking for. I believe she's answered your question. I'm as confused as you. A religious leader wouldn't want to be involved and to help lead this. But, you know, I have that faith in our administrators that they're doing their due diligence to try to find the people who are needed to have these kinds of ceremonies, so.
I just wanted to ask a question.
No, I appreciate it.
I think for years since this establishment opened up in '67, '66, we've had a Baccalaureate. And now all of a sudden, it's going away. And it's got to be coming back to the administrative part of it, not to the public part of it.
There is a Baccalaureate. I'll agree.
Yeah, I thought it was at 2:00 on Saturday. That's what I was told.
It's on Sunday.
Oh, on Sunday, that's what I meant, yeah.
The building, and there's a... My name's Jaclyn, I live in Mulberry, my son is a senior at Kingswood. And there is Baccalaureate happening on June 9th at 2:00. But anyway, I think Swenson's are tweeting on at request from the high school principal.
Thank you. Well, that's what I had read too, so I was surprised also from the previous questions in common. And that's usually why I encourage members of the public or board members to check the administration or the building principals head because they would have had that question very directly and quickly. So glad we could clarify that confusion before people took to Facebook this evening. Is there any other public input? Hearing none. We will continue with the business of our meeting. Next is the student representative report from Elliot Geisler. Elliot? Take it away.
Thank you very mu... Oh, it's on, perfect. Think I'd be better. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Elliot Geisler, I'm a senior this year at Kingswood Regional High School. We're going to get started with the athletic department. Most of the sports rolling to a close at this point. Softball will have a game tomorrow after a win this past Saturday. They're on to the second round of their playoffs. They'll be playing Oyster River. With track and field, Emerson Donido has moved on to the New England meet for high jump and has set a new school record at 6'2". And Kyler Repose will also be going to the New England Wide Meet for the 400 meter as she set a new personal best of sub 59, which is incredibly hard to do in the 400 meter for those of you who don't know. Moving into the arts department, pretty quiet at the end of the year here. The band will be performing at Senior Banquet this Friday, at least to my knowledge. And there will be a performance from some members of the chorus at graduation on the 14th. Moving on to end of the year senior activities and everything else going on inside the building itself. Scholarship awards night will be this Thursday in the Art Center. As previously mentioned, Senior Banquet will be this Friday. Student council elections will be happening in the very near future. So you'll be in very short order finding out who's going to do my job next year. Baccalaureate will be happening this Sunday as stated and sponsored by the Swenson family at 2:00 p.m. That night, also in the Art Center, will be Senior Athlete Awards Night. Senior finals will be happening early next week with graduation practices also happening during the week. And obviously, graduation will be next Friday, June 14th, with a rain date of the next morning on the 15th. The last day of school will be June 21st, and that will be a half day. And that will bring the year to a close for all the students. And that is all I have. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Elliot. And we want to thank you for your service. For those that don't know, Elliot is the number two gold scholar speaking at graduation. He'll be attending the University of Southern Maine. I once sat in your chair seven years ago, so maybe you'll sit in my chair seven years later. But we have a gift for you to thank you for your service. We'd like to thank. Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Eric Kelly?
Thank you very much. And thank you, Elliot, for your dedication and service to this board. Okay, so I'd like to highlight just a couple of things on the district report I provided to the board. First being the, we're going to be launching a new communication online platform, an app for families in the community and staff and for students. It's called Parent Square. It's a way that all groups can use a consistent platform, one centralized location, so we can share important information, updates, resources. We'll have more information on Parent Square as we get closer to the school year. But we've heard really successful stories and positive input from districts around the state who use Parent Square. And there's real data as far as increasing communication efforts to all our stakeholders. So there's much more to come on that. I'm excited to announce that. And on the topic of sharing communication and data and progress, we are also going to reveal some more data that we'll have as far as progress on our strategic plan. It will be on our website. We'll have a public dashboard of the progress for each goal in the strategic plan, as well as academic updates. Those will be mostly for the first focus area and the other specific goals and objectives. So more of that to come as we continue to roll that out. I'm also notifying the board of end of year field trips that are out of state and overnight. We have Effingham Grade 6 going to the Boston Museum of Science and the Charles Playhouse. The middle school is going to DC for the National History Day, a group of aid students. LRTC Precision Manufacturing to Skills USA Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, as well as middle school students to the Skills USA Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. And that is my report.
Thank you. Is there any questions about the report for the superintendent? I'll say communication, that'll be excellent. There won't be any confusion on dates of events. The KARHS Alumni Association, is there someone here to... Yes.
Kristy Smith.
How are you?
Not sure this is on. It's resident. Wow, there we go. I'm not sure I need that, but I will for the sake of everyone in the back. Good evening, my name is Kristy Smith. I am the president of the Kingswood Alumni Association and a graduate of Kingswood from 1989 and a high school art teacher for going on 30 years at high school. So I'm very invested in this community. We are thankful for the opportunity to just update you. This is considered our annual report of just kind of what we've done this year. The presentation of our 16th Annual Scholarship is scheduled for this Friday at Senior Banquet. We welcome the students of the class of 2024 as the newest alumni of Kingswood Regional High School. They will have the distinction of being the 60th class to graduate from Kingswood. Our scholarship application is open to current members of the senior class as well as alumni. This year, the Alumni Scholarship Committee reviewed 26 applications from the class of 2024 and 13 applications from alumni of Kingswood. We will be awarding two scholarships to members of the class of 2024 and one scholarship to a Kingswood alumnus from the class of 2023. I'm not going to tell you the names tonight because that's to be revealed on Friday. But that's been our process. We are hoping, we had some generous donations. We would like to give more, but we're always open to donations to the scholarship fund. Our recipients, as we look at the packets, are all demonstrated as strong commitment to the Kingswood community by being active members of the student body, working and volunteering in our towns, and striving for personal academic success. Our longest running fundraiser for our scholarship has been the Kingswood Alumni Golf Tournament, which we held this past October. This was an 18-hole shotgun start best ball tournament and has always been lots of fun with raffles, food, and prizes. Kudos to our fundraising chair, Chris Nelson, for all his hard work in keeping this event going the past few years. This year, we kicked off our first ever nightly cornhole classic, Toss for Tuition. The event took place on Saturday, May 4th, from 9:00 to 2:00 at Alumni Field. Being our first attempt at this event, we learned a lot about what to do even better next year. We hope to try to host an indoor cornhole tournament with vendors, maybe at the end of March. We decided that that, there was a lot going on that weekend. The weather's unpredictable, so we kind of regrouped afterwards. But we definitely saw enough enthusiasm to think we can make it bigger and better next year. There's a lot of potential for growth. I would like to recognize again Chris Nelson and our Public Relations Chair, Mary Ellen Bridges, for bringing this idea to life. Not a small task. Thank you to Allison Culkins, who worked on the planning committee, while Deb Skelly and Lenny Moore provided support and their judging skills the day of the tournament. Thank you to our sponsors, the Okla family, Duran Independent Insurance, Avery Insurance, the Ed Roundy family, and the Belials Family Foundation gave us a very generous $3,000 donation. And thank you to everyone else, students included, who helped make this event possible. Here's to a bigger and better cornhole tournament next year. We are always on the lookout for any Kingswood alumni or members of the Kingswood community to join us. We tend to meet the first Monday of the month during the school year. We take the summer off. And most of our efforts are planned around these fundraising events and then doing the scholarships in the spring. The other, the Kingswood Alumni Association will continue to be available for alumni communication and support. We continue to maintain alumni library and storage for archival materials. We also have a nearly complete collection of the Kingswood yearbooks, the Lance, starting with the class of 1965. We also have the class of 1984 will be celebrating their 40th reunion this fall. We've been requested, as I'm at the high school, things get directed to me. They're requesting tours as part of their weekend event. So we'll be providing tours of the campus. We always start at the trophy case because that's still here from the original building just to get everyone centered. And then we do a tour around the campus just to let them see how things have changed from. And so we thank you again for your continued support.
Thank you. Next part of our agenda is the August board meeting date. Would you like to provide some context about Eric Kelly?
Have to. So under the August board meeting dates, you do have a memo in your packets. The motion at the last meeting was for the SAU to identify a date when all board members would be available to attend. We've been unsuccessful in identifying a date when all board members can attend. So we are asking for a new motion. We have a new date to hold a meeting this summer.
Charlie, you have a motion?
I do. I do have a motion. My motion is to reaffirm the motion unanimously approved at our 6th May 2024 meeting, which is the following. Not to meet during the August date and allow the SAU to coordinate a date that works for all school board members within the months of July or August.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Charlene, seconded by Dr. Jim. Is there any additional comments or questions? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to speak to my motion. It's my understanding that a particular date has been proposed, which is July 22nd. And it's also my understanding that only four, I believe, board members have responded in the affirmative. And so I realize, I realized later this afternoon that Kathy Legassi, thank you very much, Kathy, has resent an email with that particular date soliciting responses from all the board members. I've already responded that I'm available that date as well as every day in July except the morning of July 11th. And so I don't know if, Mr. Chair, if we would as part of our discussion ask board members to check their calendars now or if we want to just move forward with this particular motion and second.
I'd say we'll speak to the substantive motion before we start asking people to check their ca... I mean, check your calendar if you haven't already. But I'll talk later some about the communications. But, you know, Kathy has solicited dates and it's hard for Kathy to schedule meetings when board members do not respond to the solicitation regarding when scheduled meetings, whether they're committee meetings or a regular board meeting. My only hesitation to your motion, Charlene, is I'm not sure if the administrative staff will have enough for us to take action on until August. However, I'm more than willing to schedule a special meeting in August to facilitate that. But it's contingent on the board responding to Kathy Legassi's emails so we can schedule something in mid-August, so we can get a form. Usually it's to do hiring for the next school year.
Could you restate the last part? Are you still looking for a meeting in mid-August?
We'd probably need a special meeting.
A special meeting?
There would be, because we don't want people who have been hired or told that they're going to be presented with a contract to be sitting and waiting multiple months for the board to finalize and approve that contract. That's a concern. Or they may get another offer from another school district and say, oh, I'm going to go sign that contract because they presented me with one that their boards, you know, accepted. So that's the concern. July 25th, there might not be enough contracts for us to take action on. Or the time gap between the 25th and September meeting, the school year will have already started and we won't have approved several contracts.
Is the 25th of July another date that's being considered? I wasn't, the email I got today, and I think the whole board got, was referring to July 22nd?
Yeah, my apologies, the 22nd. But yeah. Yes, Jim Pittman?
All right, thank you. Brody, Mr. Chair, the item you referred to in terms of the hiring, I believe that's a separate line item on our agenda this evening. So that consideration may become moot in consideration of the meeting date.
I do agree, but there's still, we still have to confirm the hires that the superintendent has. So theoretically, if on the next item, we approve the authority to hire, we still need to approve those hires retroactively. And we'd be waiting until September to do that rather than August. I see your point, but, you know, if you're someone who was hired and you start the school year and you don't have it approved by the school board, you might have a little bit of concern. Rather not have new employees have that concern, so.
If I may, I think you may be incorrect with that. And I would maybe consult with the superintendent for her input on it.
Go ahead. But we had a discussion, but yeah.
So yes, so the next agenda item is authority to hire. And regardless of when the meeting is, so if there's a meeting in July, I would request a motion to, for the board to grant the authority to hire to the superintendent. So after I nominate and confirm a finalist, we would give them a... So after I nominate and confirm a finalist, we would give them a contract. And then when you do have a meeting, you would simply ratify what has already been done. So we could do that at either month?
Yeah, so, so we do still have to ratify. I mean, I don't think we would not ratify, but that also is contingent upon the next item in our agenda being approved. So, but I think the consideration of a meeting date is separate from that. So, question is, are we going to approve Charlene's motion? And is there any discussion on Charlene's motion? Yes.
Just to clarify, my motion is requesting that we reaffirm the unanimous motion that we just approved at our May meeting, which was instructing the SAU to not meet at the currently proposed date of August the 12th and allow the SAU to coordinate a date that works for all school board members within the months of July or August. And I'd also like to remind everyone on the board that I am available August 1st through 10th.
Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Kathy, could you restate the motion that you have written and then call the roll?
Is there a second?
Do not.
Yes.
Yes, there is a second.
I don't have the old motion in order to restate it. Did you want me to read it again because I took it out of the straight from the minutes? Okay.
Okay, I'll repeat the whole motion. I move to reaffirm the motion unanimously approved at our 6th May 2024 meeting, which is the following. Quote, "Not to meet during the August date," and I'll add "currently August 12th" for clarification, "and allow the SAU to coordinate a date that works for all school board members within the months of July or August."
Whenever you're ready, Kathy, please.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes. So Kathy has sent you all an email. Please respond and.
What? Do you have your hand or is that where it should be?
They found, they found the previous motion, put it right down, so I'll be responding with Kathy. Next on our agenda is authority to hire. Dr. Eric Helling.
Thank you. So it's common across districts for boards to allow the, to, to grant the superintendent the authority to hire when you skip a month in the, particularly in the summer for board meetings so that we can issue contracts to finalists. So we do not have a date for the summer, so the motion here could be edited because we at this time do not know if there will be a July or an August meeting. So it would be helpful for us to have authority to hire during the month when there is no meeting. So that could be July or August.
Can I just ask a clarification about the proposed motion? I move to grant the superintendent the authority to hire between June and August board meetings. Can we just say, grant you the authority to hire from June 1st to August 31st? Are you, would you?
You could, however, you have, you will likely have a meeting in that time, at which point I would bring those nominations to the board. And then the board would, and then, so I wouldn't need this motion. But that would cover it.
Okay. So I would ask someone to make a motion to grant the superintendent the authority to hire between June 3rd and some date in August.
I'll make the motion. Can I suggest that you change to August and just say the next meeting?
Yes.
Which is what it will be?
Okay, that's a, that's a, so you'll make the motion to grant the superintendent the authority to hire between June 3rd and our next school board meeting?
Correct.
That's a good, so move. Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion?
May I make one comment?
Yes.
It's possible that I will bring this item to the board again. So if you have the meeting on July 22nd, I would ask for the authority again because then we wouldn't have another meeting until September, and it would be critical to have the authority to hire between July 22nd, for example, and a September meeting. So those employees will have contracts and can start the school year.
Excellent. And I will state too, last year I didn't support this motion. I've changed my mind because I didn't realize when we were talking about this last year that we got final say over ratification of the contracts. That's an important thing. So the superintendent will send us when there are people who she's going to send a contract to, and then we do get final say over ratification. So just so every board member's aware. So you're still involved in the hiring process. With that, is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Kathy, do you have the motion?
Yes.
Would you like to restate it first briefly and then we can vote?
I move to grant the superintendent the authority to hire between the June 3rd and the next meeting.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. Awesome. We are now on to item E, under the superintendent's report, budget transfer request. The Evanon Elementary School has budget transfer request for the board. Dr. Eric Helling, would you like to add some additional information?
Not too much additional information. However, this is per the policy that we bring this amount to the board, request to transfer budget amounts from, for the public to know, computer, supplies, workbooks, books, print media, new equipment, and move those to accounts for new furniture.
I see Principal Patty Morrissey's in the, well, yes, a motion first, and then if anyone has any questions or comments, and I'm sure Principal Morrissey can clarify anything too.
I'd like a vague motion to authorize the transfer of those funds. Appropriate yet.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yeah, Tom.
Hello? As I look at the categories of the funds that have been taken out and transferred into furniture funds, it looks to me like these might be S3 accounts, and which are dedicated to learning laws. And, and I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Yeah, Tom, I'll clarify. This is not, this is not ESER money. This is in our operating budget.
Okay.
Okay. Does I? Okay, perfect. Yes, Jim.
Just clarifying question for Principal Morrissey. I'm assuming these four accounts from which the funds will be moved, these essentially represent surplus for each of those counts, so there will be no shortfalls?
No, that wouldn't, they would not imply a shortfall at all.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Tom?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. Awesome. And item F, the YRBS 2023 results.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So this is information for the board and the public. The Kingswood Youth Risk Behavior Survey results from the 2023 report are now posted on the Governor Wentworth Regional School District website, that's GWRSD.org, under a bell on the Data and Reporting tab. This is a survey that occurs every other year, and we just received the 2023 results. The high school will be preparing next year for the, for the, for the next, for the next survey for students, so it's 9 through 12. It's, it has various categories about health and safety, everything from seatbelt use to drug use, to sexual activity, to dental hygiene, many different areas. It gives us a lot of data and insight as far as how our students are reporting and information about where we can support them better, where we're improving, where we have gaps. So I did not print that out for the board. It is a 100-page report. However, in speaking to our Principal Famulari and Head of Counseling, Laura Crane, we plan to use some of this information in the future, working with counselors and in the budget process in the fall. It directly relates to our student wellness focus area of the strategic plan. So we're just getting started with, with looking at that data, and we'll follow up with the, with the board on our activities around the YRBS results.
Thank you. And I believe the last thing on your report is the item we had during agenda review, which is a donation for the wrestling.
Yes, thank you. Actually, we have two donations. Only one requires a board vote, one requires a notification. So one, just the notification, was, let's see, from the Friends of Kingswood Hockey. Jamie Heen, president, is donating $3,000 to the Kingswood Girls Hockey Team. So that is notification to the board. And the donation that requires action by the board, just, I just received this today. So this is to the Kingswood Wrestling Foundation in the amount of $15,000 payable from the Belile Family Foundation. The purpose of this support and donation is to afford the wrestling program the ability to purchase new wrestling mats for the start of the '24-'25 season. Once I've been informed of its acceptance by the board, they will send us a check for the Kingswood account. This is from Tony Belile, Director of Belile Family Foundation, head cross-country coach here and track coach. So very generous donation that requires board vote to accept.
Excellent. I would request a motion to accept the donation, the amount of $15,000 from the Belile Family Foundation for the Kingswood Wrestling fundraising.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Guy Pike, seconded by Dr. Jim Manick. Is there any discussion? Do you have a question?
Jim, any?
Oh, I thought it was Jim. I'm sorry. I had my doctors confused. Dr. Beth. So a motion by Guy Pike, seconded by Dr. Beth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, would you call the roll when you're ready?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. Okay, thank you, Dr. Eric Helling.
Thank you, that's my report.
Great. Thank you, guys. Have a great night. You too. Good to see you. So first, under Section A of my chairman's report, correspondence. We sent expressions of sympathy to Kathy Cuddy-Egbert, our former superintendent, her husband passed away. Some staff members also, our condolences are with Mary Shilvriff, the passing of her mother. She was, I saw the piece in the Grand State News and it really made me smile. So I remember, I mentioned this to you, but I remember having lunch with her when I was in high school, before I ever met you, reading the newspaper with her at Katie's Kitchen. I also went to Deb Skelly's retirement party and saw a lot of former staff there. She left, but there was a lot of wonderful staff I haven't seen in years, and it was a pleasure to catch up with them. We also have to schedule our NHSBA training. There was a conflict with the, with Bear Christina, who's the executive director of the NHSBA. So we have a few that we're considering, the week of August 19, the week of August 26, and the month of September, not 9/12 or 9/18, so September 14 or September 18. Would you like us to lock down a date right now? You guys want to lock down a date right now for NHSBA training, or do you want Kathy to email us all and solicit what dates are best? Okay, you guys, I have a third item under this and we'll talk about that, but Kathy, if you could send an email, your earliest convenience. Okay. And then the last thing I have is I added to our agenda, communication protocol and procedures. So I want to remind board members in accordance with our policies of the district and our ethics policies that when we have complaints or requests, to bring them to the superintendent first, to schedule a meeting, have a phone call, and send her an email. I often find that my concerns or my confusion can often be quelled or, you know, she can help me better understand the operations of the district. The other thing is email threads about things that could be possible within the board's purview. I'd like us to limit and to not do that. I want to make sure that when we're discussing anything that could possibly ever come before the board, even if you're sharing an article that's something interesting, that we save that for, for board meetings. And then the last thing is responding to Kathy Legassi when she is soliciting dates for meetings or committee meetings. We want to be able to collaborate, make sure everyone can attend the meetings, but to do that, we have to work with Kathy. She does an excellent job coordinating all of these things. And so I just asked the board, remember those things moving forward, and it will help for better board operations, more efficient meetings, and will help you become, you know, all of us become better board, better, more, more well-educated on the district as board members. So with that, does anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none. That's the end of my chairman's report. I appreciate you guys indulging me for a quick minute. We'll go on to the Academic Affairs Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may have all noticed with great relief that we're not going through a bunch of policies tonight, and I'm anticipating that our next committing meeting will be in September. Correct? Okay. But before I turn it over to Brody to bring up some ways that he and I discussed to streamline the process and, you know, help things move along more efficiently, I wanted to present to you a wonderful result of Kathy Legassi's great research and time spent. I want to make sure, first of all, that she understands how grateful I am, and I'm sure I'm speaking for all the board members, at the yeoman's work you do to make sure that we're informed and knowledgeable. So I want to thank you for that. Yes. So I have a brief report that Kathy has called our year in review, so we all have a better feeling. It's an encapsulation of what the Academic Affairs Committee has been doing for the last school year. During four quarterly meetings, September, November, January, and March, the Academic Affairs Committee tackled 141 policies, resulting in a total of 14 adoptions, 47 withdrawals, and 80 revisions/reaffirmations approved by the full board this school year. There are 11 categories of school board policies in place. There are 11 categories of school board policies in place, totaling 281 individual policies. Seven categories are current and updated within the last five years. 2019 is the oldest revision, but most have been within the last three years. The anticipated plan moving forward is to update the remaining four categories. Those are instructional, students, community and home relations, relations and relations with educational institutions and agencies during the 2024-2025 school year, totaling approximately 140 policies. Going forward, reviewing 90 to 100 policies per school year would result in a current status within three years. We look forward to our first meeting of the 24-25 school year in September. And again, I want to thank Kathy so very much, not only for putting together this year in review, but also for all of the work that she does in, in going through policies, teasing out the ones that need attention, and just everything that she does behind the scenes.
Thank you. I think we just started a new tradition, Kathy. And if I may, well, actually, Charlene and I were discussing, because sometimes we get very much, we'll have tangential conversations or indirect conversations about policies, and we're trying to figure out a way to encourage discussion over policies where the entire board may want to make amendments and to facilitate, though, passing the policies where there's consensus. So I've talked to, I sent Charlene after long conversations some bulleted notes and spoke with the vice chairman and to the superintendent, and I'm looking for some buying for this to be a procedure that we do normal moving forward, so then we can facilitate our, our policymaking process as a full board. So the first step would be the Academic Affairs Committee will discuss, amend, and recommend policies to the entire board in accordance with the current procedure, so how we currently do it. You know, the Academic Affairs Committee works with administrative staff and reviews things based on what's recommended by the National School Boards Association. At first read, the academic, the chair of the Academic Affairs Committee will go through one section at a time, adoption, revision, reaffirmation, withdrawal, and request comments or questions, and not to read every single individual letter code, those to be placed onto the agenda, but to ask for board member comments as we go over those three large sections. At second read, the Academic Affairs Chair will start by asking the board if there are any questions about the policies, and most of those questions will be directed not just to her as chair, but to the administrative staff. After the Academic Affairs Chair and administration answer questions, the Academic Affairs Chair will move the policies by section. So first, new policies for adoption, then revision, reaffirmation, and withdrawal for bulk vote, and another board member can second the motion. The board may discuss, debate the motion, or amend the motion. If board members have an issue with any policies in the bulk vote, they are free to make a motion to amend the bulk vote and remove any policy or policies. If the motion passes, the board can consider those policies or policies separately. All policies will be voted upon, first with a bulk vote, then the policies removed from the bulk vote will be considered separately. And discussion will only be permitted on motions currently on the floor, which is in accordance with our meeting rules. So that's kind of what we discuss. So we'll have a big bulk vote on all the policies we agree on, and then if we need to isolate three or four policies, we can have them substantive discussion if the entire board agrees that those, you know, policies that we pull from the bulk votes require a, a separate discussion and additional amendments. I feel as if this balances the needs for the board, you know, to have efficient meetings that the public can assess, because if we start having three or four-hour meetings every single month, it becomes tougher for members of the public or, you know, all the members of our support staff union who want to spend the time to see what action items we're taking on their stuff. So does anyone, I can talk more in depth outside of a meeting about it, or I can answer any questions now? Yes, Jim?
I believe we had documentation before on procedure. Does this change from what we had?
This would be how the board, when we're taking over the policies, so not how the policies get to the board, and it would be conforming to that.
Can you provide documentation of what you just presented?
Yes, I have it written, and I'd be more than happy. I mean, before, I were to say this is a procedure moving forward, I would want feedback from the board. If, you know, six other people say, "I don't like that idea," then, you know, then I'd say, "Then we don't like the idea." But I'm just trying to find a way to facilitate these meetings, especially the policy aspect, so we don't get bogged down.
Okay, great. Thank you. And for the record, I am also joyful that we do not have policies to, maybe, this evening.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Boris.
I just wanted to remind our, our future viewing public and those who are present tonight that every single policy is posted on our website, and that if anyone has difficulty, either, you know, you don't have an electronic device to access the website, or you're having difficulty, please contact the superintendent's office at 603-569-1658, and anyone can assist you with that, or if you have any questions about a particular policy, please feel free to contact the SAU, and if you would like to copy me on your email, that would be fine. But I just wanted everyone to know that every single policy and the ones that we'll be considering are on, would be on the agenda, and you can access all that through our website. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Seeing no other things to report on, thank you. And we will move on to the Buildings and Maintenance Report, and I think Jim Pittman has an update on the train contract.
Yes, thank you. And I also want to slip in there that I always try to respond to Kathy's emails promptly. I note the implications if I don't.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
The big news on building and maintenance is that the meeting we had scheduled for this month has been canceled, the reason being that in the conversation with administration, we did not find action items for an agenda that would be worth our effort to, to get together. Part of the reasoning for that is that right now is the Escher project that you were alluding to with the train is driving the agenda of building and maintenance right now. So the intention is that as the summer progresses and progress progresses, we will schedule those meetings as we see necessary. As far as progress on that, I believe that we have signed contracts and all of that. I would defer to the superintendent if she wants to add more detail to that, but it is my understanding that we are moving forward, and as far as I know, we'll, we'll begin the work, the physical work at the three schools, Carpenter School, Crescent Lake, and Osiphe School, hopefully on schedule. That's all.
That's all, that's all right, and the executed contract, very exciting.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Jim Pittman. Next, we have the Finance Committee, which is shared by me, and we have one action item, and then I'll update the board on some, a couple of other things. But our action item is on the Freedom Tuition MOU. You'll remember at our last board meeting, we approved setting up a tuition agreement with the Freedom School District, that they would send up to 10% of their students to our, our middle school and high schools, so seven through 12, and that they would bear the cost of transportation, they would pay the average cost, the cost us to educate a middle schooler or a high schooler, based on DUE data from the pride. And so this is just the MOU confirming all of that, that we need to formally approve as a board, so then we can move forward for the next school year. So I would seek a motion to approve the Freedom Tuition MOU as presented. Moved by Dr. Beth. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Jim Manning. Is there any discussion or questions? Yes, Charlene.
In the third paragraph, I think it should, is it still on? Okay. In the third paragraph, I think it should say, whereas GWRSD.
Yep, they missed an S. Thank you for catching that. If anyone has any grammatical things, definitely raise them, but let's try to substant, substantive. Yes, Guy?
Excuse me. Out of curiosity, do we have any idea how many students Freedom might send this first GORA?
Eligible was like, what, nothing?
No, they're eligible, correct?
Eligible's nine. There's no guarantee that they send up to the nine.
Right.
They just provide the choice to the families.
Thank you.
So, I mean, similar would be Wakefield. Wakefield, they fill all their seats at Wakefield. They usually, when they left the lottery system, people waited in line starting at 5:00 AM.
Yep.
So they could come to Kingswood. So speaks to the educational, I see all the Gwissa members shaking their heads, saying, yes, we know. So, any other discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, could you call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman? Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. I mean, I, I, yeah, I, the vice chair just wanted me to remind you that by that vote, you're authorizing myself and him and Dr. Eric Helly to sign the, the MOU, or everyone. Oh, for the full board to sign the MOU. So you all have to sign. Thank you. Okay. And I have two updates. One is on the SO3. We voted at our last meeting to obligate our, all of our SO3 money, and that money is going to be spent, and there are contingencies for transportation, for anything we have left over to pay for that, any extra transportation supplies, so that is informed by the taxpayers in the future. And then the Wolfboro impact fees, we sent a letter to the towns of the district explaining that situation, how Wolfboro will be provided a credit for 10 years of a very minimal amount for their overpayment of impact fees, and explained our position as to it not being our clerical error, but the error on the town of Wolfboro. So, and the tax impact will be negligible. And with that, I will pass it on to Dr. Manning. Yeah?
Thank you, Brody. As you all know, on 28th of May, we had a meeting of the Resources Commission, and we moved the topic of retention bonuses to the full board of the full, of the committee. Is that working? Does that matter?
And Eden?
Yeah.
We will not vote, so we said we're going to move it to the full board's attention, see if, let them make the vote and decide what they want to do, and we would deter funding from unreserved fund balances to provide one-time bonuses to the union and non-union support staff for no more than $3,000. That was for the discussion, that was the starting point for discussion. Unfortunately, during that period of time, we also found out something that we didn't know about. Unreserved funds are held in abeyance until August. Is that right, Kathy?
So I will not know what the number of the unreserved fund balance is until towards the end of July, beginning of August.
Until the audit's complete, right?
Because we have purchase orders, and it's like the, um...
And because of that, we can't tap into that fund. Unfortunately, we thought we could, but we can't. So in essence, we really like to do something, but we don't know how we're at there. We don't have the funding, because the thing is, we can't retroactively with checks. You know, we knew, we knew before June 30, we could probably do something, but we can't. So that's, that's a problem, it's a conundrum for us. I don't know exactly how else to say it, but in circumstances, we're kind of stuck. And I think it's up to the board to make a decision, and have Carolyn, Carolyn, have any input? Appreciate it.
We did, we did, you know, on looking at the, at the funds, unreserved fund balance, that is the case, where, you know, you're, you're always invoicing, and then they're paying, and it's a, it's a month later. So that is something that, you know, looking at our unreserved fund balance, that's, that's what we did determine. We also know that this district has not approved a warrant to reserve 2.5% of district funds, and so the, the community, the understanding across the community is to return the funds. So I think, you know, I would recommend that the community have the opportunity to weigh in on how to use unreserved funds. They vote on using unreserved funds for the maintenance warrant article, the turf field warrant article, and so that's how the community is used to being involved in using unreserved funds. If the board were to allocate some of the unreserved funds now by a vote, it wouldn't have gone to the community in that way. That would be a risk for the association going into a negotiation year. And when you go into a negotiation year, and you're looking to improve a contract, and then, you know, ask the community to approve a contract, it's a trade-off. And so, you know, while, I hope, I hope that the districts and, and the employees know how much I value our care professionals, it is, you know, I think it's, it's a consideration whether to ask for bonuses ahead of a negotiation year. So that's, it's a risk. That's, that's what I want to make sure people are aware of.
There's a lot of risks involved. There are a lot of risks involved.
I just want to clarify, though, you say a lot of the care professionals. Our support staff are the bus drivers who are up at 4:00 AM every day driving these students around.
I certainly understand, but if we could let the rest of the board discuss, if they want to have a motion, you know, I, I had a father that was support staff for 13 years in the district, unpaid, non-union, and left because of that. So don't, don't, don't get me wrong, I sat at the dining room table and heard, heard from here to Sunday, so I definitely, I understand, it's just, it's just, there's a change, change in the guard, and there are certain requests that were made earlier that I didn't get to be involved in those decisions, so. Is there any other discussion? Any other questions or any motion? Yes, Jim?
I guess I have one question. Are we looking to make a decision on this this evening through a motion?
Our decision is either to make a motion. I mean, we've already obligated all of our SO3 funds for learning loss and other actions, and, and, and it's become pretty apparent, we can't, we can't promise funds that we may not have, because we don't know.
I understand that portion.
So now, if the board wanted to try to do that, I mean, I wouldn't support that, but the other option then is to do nothing, which is, you know, the, the issue dies, we move down the agenda to the next item.
Okay.
But other people may have comments or questions to just better understand the situation, and the memo really lays out over a three-year period, is it three or two-year, over, you know, over a two-year period, how we've gotten to where we are. Different committees that have made recommendations against the bonuses. I mean, I want to say this might be the third or the fourth time that this has come either to a committee or to the full board. I mean, this is the most public of a discussion we've had as a full board about this. I thought it was a just thing to do, and to try to figure out what we can do, and, you know, so we've, we've now seen what the answers are in front of us.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say I appreciate and support the merits of this request. I think what we're running into is that we have no clear path forward to fund it based on what has just been explained here, so, you know, it's, it's difficult to find a way to, to find these dollars at this point in time, and it's unfortunate. Thank you.
Any additional? Yes, Charlene?
Yes, my question would be for Kathy O. Do you have a ballpark figure of what the total would be if we honor, or if we decided Do you have a ballpark figure of what the total would be if we honor, or if we decided to approve the $3,000 for a bonus? Do you not have the total for that?
It's just like $500,000.
Kathy, is that, what's the figure we have on our end?
Was it? I have, I apologize, I did not, did not bring that with me, and I, you know, I like exact numbers, but I think it's just over $800,000, because it don't include FICA and retirement.
So that's the total? That's not just looking at the $3,000 bonus request?
Isn't that what you just asked, what the $3,000 would be?
Right, for a bonus. Oh, and then you add on, on top of that, the FICA and whatnot. So, so I heard $500,000 up there, and you have an $800,000?
No, she's all right, I'm the same, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that it's not particularly likely that we would have that amount of money in unencumbered funds at, after June 30th, correct?
I can say with complete assurance that right now we have over $8.4 million in encumbrances, which means they're either in positions for salaries and wages and benefits associated to payroll, as well as open purchase orders. And I will not know until the end of July, when those encumbrances are paid either through salary through the end of June, or when invoices trickle in over the month of July and into August, what that relief of those POs by being closed, what that then unreserved fund balance will be, and will be on the point of June 30th, when you can cut wages through payroll. So at this moment in time, unencumbered balance left in the budget is $191,000.
Oh.
Well, that's concerning also for our warrant articles.
That's why I'm saying, I'm not going to know. And when the warrant article, so when all the purchase orders close, all the invoices come through, when we go through our process of, of reaching out to the schools saying, you know, make sure your purchase orders, can this be closed? There's nothing, you know, it's old, it's, but our, our new accounts payable purchasing bookkeeper has been on top of that, so she has a very good control of that. We will, you know, obviously the bills will come in, they'll be paid, the purchase order will be closed, so when it comes time for everyone in their office to do their part in the audit, and then it comes to me, then I know what we have for unreserved fund balance, and that's when it can be transferred, those trust to warrant articles can be transferred.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any additional comments or questions? Yes, Mary?
I just want to say, I applaud the effort put into this discussion, the SR meeting, the HR meeting, that the central office put into it to sort out.
The merit of this, the potential for this, you know, they did.
Discredits.
I'm going to back up what you said, the merit of it, our understanding of it, having been a retired educator, if you don't know that by now, the, the support, bus drivers everywhere, the, the support staff, that is not going away.
That I believe strongly that going forward, the time that's been spent on this, we absolutely value. The fact that it's not possible, given the data, I think needs to be taken into consideration as well.
I'd say, is there any other additional comments or questions? I'd say the merits of this is something that is worthy of consideration during our negotiations, and I think that's the best place to put it, to get our approval from the taxpayers and figure out how we can find something like this that can be put into a future contract, and continue to collaborate and figure out how we can get to a contract that the taxpayers support, and that this is going to help you guys with the comfortable standard of living in the school district. It's not easy for everyone, I understand. You know, I just got my tax bill, and let me tell you, like, you know, I just had a car that needed an engine replaced for $6,000. I'm not in a very comfortable spot right now. And I understand there are staff members who, if they have expenses like that that happens to them, they also get very uncomfortable spots and have to call their credit even near their bank and ask for a personal loan. So, you know, I, I understand, I want to treat you guys justly, I just can't prom, well, we can't promise you money that we can't guarantee. So that's, that's where we're at, and I hope we can have still positive and collaborative negotiations, and I still hope to meet with your leadership soon to figure out what you guys' goals are, and outside of just negotiations, but also as staff and the kind of district that you want, and that you want your leadership to embody too. I hope you guys don't find that to be hollow words. Again, I had a father who worked in this district for 13 years without any benefits and he made less than I did as a fry cook at Doc's. So, I understand.
We have students that make more money than we do for it.
Well aware.
As you, as many of you are aware, I have a family member who was on that.
I know you do.
And I may end up having to abstain and be vote, because unfortunately, it directly affects a family member.
Our, our goal was to hopefully not lose staff over the summer, and I can guarantee you that we are going to.
Well, we're doing the best, we're trying to do the best we can, Terry, you know that, so, you know, that's the way it goes.
I appreciate that, Dr. Manning.
Good. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we move on to the G and F and L amendment.
We have an addendum to the GWA contract, which is family leave, and I believe in terms of sending some to all the manufacturers, the thing is, it's probably written into all the CBAs, that family leave act didn't include things like, for instance, adoption, and you weren't allowed to use it. And being an adoptive parent, I really would like that myself, because, you know, we have plenty of expenses going into adoption, it costs us $11,000 to get our daughter. We had nothing to support her, she had to pay for it. So I, there's a lot of legal stuff in this, and I don't want to make a mistake on it, so I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn and let her dish her way through it.
Peter? So I'm going to just.
Governor Wyntworth, Governor.
Tess, thank you. The Governor Wyntworth School District and Education Association recognize the importance of supporting employees who require leave for medical or family reasons as outlined in the Family Medical Leave Act. Employees recognized under this collective bargaining agreement who qualify for leave under FMLA shall be eligible to utilize accrued sick leave in conjunction with their FMLA leave entitlement. Employees shall comply with the notice and documentation requirements outlined in the FMLA and this collective bargaining agreement when requesting sick leave under FMLA. Sick leave used in conjunction with FMLA leave shall be deducted from the employee's accrued sick leave balance in accordance with the terms of this agreement. So what this means is that if an employee, if a GWA level employee qualifies for FMLA, they may use their sick time regardless of what the FMLA is approved for. So sometimes FMLA is approved for when you are ill, and then sick days are obviously available to be used, but as Dr. Manning mentioned, sick time doesn't ordinarily apply, for example, if you're an adoptive parent. However, now with this addendum, we can use sick time for whenever FMLA is, is approved. So we would ask for the board's support.
So the motion would be to approve the, the FMLA and sick leave addendum for the GWA contract as presented?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Jim Pittman, seconded by Dr. Beth. Is there any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none. Kathy, when you're ready, could you call the vote, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. Closing activities, advanced planning. On June 3rd, which was today, and there was no rain, so we won't meet a rain date, was Bridges Day. You know, Bridges Day is when all the sixth graders around the school district meet, and they make connections before they enter middle school. I participated in Bridges Day. Really, really great part of your form of years in our school district. June 9th, as we heard, I believe at 2:00 PM in the Art Center, is baccalaureate. June 14th is KRHS graduation, alumni field at 6:00 PM, and the rain date is June 15th at 10:00 AM. The last day of school is June 21st, an early release, and the GWRSD school board meeting is to be decided in Brookfield, some likely July 22nd, but stay tuned, follow the community calendar on GWRSD.org. And with that, is there any additional public input this evening? All same, rules apply, three minutes, 15 minutes total, be respectful, no cross comments in the... Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Guy White, seconded by Jim Pittman. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Uh, Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Did you find somebody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Aye. We're adjourned.